Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meats fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your flash briefing for the week of April 14th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night, takes in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watched live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Day Brief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Volunteer for Stream Team and help protect our local streamside habitats by removing litter and debris from streams within the city's parks. This event will take place on April 19th from 10 a.m. to noon at Deer Valley Park. Trash bags and gloves are provided. Stream and scouts, community service hours are available. Volunteers must register and sign a waiver before the event. Learn more on the city's website. And celebrate the 150th anniversary of the Lee Summit Fire Department at a fun-filled open house on April 19th from 9 a.m. to noon at fire station number three located at 2023 Northwest Shamrock Avenue. Bring the whole family to tour the fire station and walk through an inflatable house to learn about fire safety. Don't miss this opportunity to honor their legacy and join the celebration. And also this weekend, join the Easter Bunny for a hopping parade on Saturday, April 19th from 10 to 11:30 a.m. downtown Lee Summit. Children and families can line up outside City Hall on Third Street at 9:45 a.m. to hop down to Howard Station Park and get a picture with the Easter Bunny. Find more information at downtownls.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Officers en route, night 14, armed from.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
Evergy, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Smith Hat Company is coming to downtown Lee Summit. Purchase a variety of hats including cowboy or cowgirl hats. Or unleash your creativity and design a one-of-a-kind custom hat, choosing from premium materials, unique embellishments, and expert craftsmanship. Smith Hat Company is hanging its hat here in spring 2025. Summit Play Village is coming to South Lee Summit near Rain Tree. The indoor children's playground will be for children eight and under to promote creativity, explore family-friendly activities, and have fun. Summit Play Village is set to open in April 2025. Street food sensation turned fast casual hit Dave's Hot Chicken is bringing the heat to Lee Summit. Specializing in Nashville-style hot chicken and serving tenders and sliders, Dave's Hot Chicken will be arriving to Summit Woods in summer 2025. Lee Summit is getting three ice cream shops across the city. Howdy Homemade Ice Cream will be scooping its way into the Chapel Ridge Shopping Center. Howdy Homemade creates a place where everyone belongs. A shop dedicated to creating jobs for people with disabilities. The amazing ice cream served by amazing people will be coming in summer 2025. Brewster's Ice Cream will serve Summit Woods Crossing with over 24 fresh rotating flavors made daily. The shop offers 150 homemade ice cream flavors, including sherbets and sorbets, as well as ice cream cakes and pies. Brewster's Ice Cream is coming in summer 2025. Summit Woods Crossing is also getting a Cold Stone Creamery. The ice cream parlor serves fresh, made-to-order, customizable ice cream mixed on a frozen granite stone. Cold Stone Creamery is coming in summer 2025.
When I was about nine years old, my mother promised me that she would buy me a little black poodle for my birthday. The poodle was here in Lee Summit. We lived in Independence. I had never been to Lee Summit before. And the funniest thing when I got here, I just thought to myself, I want to live in Lee Summit someday. So in 1975, we moved here and we bought a little house in Briarcroft for $28,000. We started having children after that. We wanted to become part of this community.
Call regular session number 61 to order a roll call.
Mayor Rhodes, he kept seeing me show up at the council meetings and he said, why are you here? And I said, well, I want to know more about what's going on with the city. I was asked to be on the tax review board.
To order the Lee Summit Planning Commission.
Then I applied to be on Planning Commission and I spent four years there. But I said, if I dip my toe in the water with planning and I love it, I'm going to try for council.
Can I have your name?
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Cindy Rader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
2024.
On the 16th day of April 2024. Thank you, Mayor. So then going along with what council member Carlisle said, we just get back into the room and we hammer it out. You know, we sit on the dais, right? And that's kind of one of the most intimidating things that you do is like being out there in front of people and being worried about, you know, saying the right thing or not saying the right thing. I want to make the right decision. I want to say things that will be impactful, that will be influential, that will help our city more. Most people know this on the dais. I am very impassioned about housing. It's partly because I've done real estate for 30 years. But it's not because I want to sell more houses. It's because we have a need, a tremendous need here in Lee Summit and really all over the country. There are a lot of people that want to come to Lee Summit. They want to live here. They want to buy homes here. I'm excited to get more attainable homes, start bringing young families, providing senior housing, workforce housing, all those things that we need if we're going to continue to grow and become bigger and better. We're really in a good place for the future. But we need to continue bringing people in to be our future leaders. The young people that will be coming to live here, stay here, have a stakehold in the community, building businesses here. I built a business here. There's other people that want to come here and live and start. It's just important for people to always be involved in the city. It makes us a better city.
Welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the chance to come together in service. May our hearts be open, our minds be clear, and our words be thoughtful as we work for the good of our city. Amen.
Hey, again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 34. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rader?
Here.
Councilmember Pryor?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Present.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Mayor Prochem Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. All right, thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Oh, Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Thank you. All votes are in, please record the vote. That's unanimous. Thank you all. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Thank you. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's also unanimous. Thank you all. Next is the council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community. Councilmember Shields, please.
Mayor, well, first I want to congratulate the Citizens Leadership Academy graduates and thank staff for putting on such a great program. We capped off their session with a mock council meeting this past weekend, which was a lot of fun. And I think Ms. Fowler Curry deserves a lot of the credit for putting all that together, if I'm correct. So thank you very much. I know everybody really appreciated it. And then this weekend, downtown Farmer's Market is opening for the season and the bunny hop will be this weekend as well. So hopefully everybody will come out downtown this weekend on Saturday and support our local farmers and our local businesses and see the Easter Bunny. Is John going to drive the fire truck this year, Councilmember Pryor?
He is on shift, so he will not be. I know.
Okay, are dogs allowed down there? I can do that with my German Shepherd. And then one other question. Oh, were you, did you participate as a radical, rowdy citizen?
I was a rowdy council member.
Oh, a rowdy council, okay.
Yes.
Very rowdy.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. And to add on to that, yes, she was a terribly rowdy council member. And, but it was so much fun. I had never done that before and we had a cast of characters with us. We had Tommy Chong, was it Tommy Chong that was running a pot store? We had Jessica somebody that was trying to be somebody with the superstore. But yeah, we had, we had all the, had the city manager and everybody was there. It was great fun. So I would do that again. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, we have one proclamation is, yeah, Ms. Berry's here, I think, and Mr. Park. Oh, and you got a citizen here, too. Gentlemen, thank you. Right, whereas Earth Day and Arbor Day are occasions to celebrate the beauty, diversity, and importance of our natural environment. And whereas Earth Day serves as a reminder of our collective responsibility to protect and preserve the earth's ecosystems, biodiversity, and natural resources. And whereas the health of our environment directly impacts the health and well-being of current and future generations, as well as the diverse ecosystems that support life on earth. Whereas Arbor Day is a time to recognize the significant role that trees play in enhancing air quality, mitigating climate change, and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees contribute to the health and well-being of communities by providing clean air, shade, and beauty while reducing energy costs and improving water quality. Earth Day and Arbor Day provide opportunities for individuals, communities, and organizations to engage in environmental education, conservation, and stewardship activities. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim April 18th as Arbor Day and April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day. All right. I bet you're here with the cultural commission.
Yes, sir.
What's your name?
Dave Eames. Yeah, I'm Michael Park, Director of Public Works. We appreciate the cultural commission supporting Earth Day and Arbor Day and the city's interest in being a Tree City USA, as well as taking care of our environment. Had a presentation a few weeks ago with regard to our clean team's efforts and some of the activities that really help support Earth Day and Arbor Day and our Stream Team event. And a lot of those things are posted on our city's website. Thankful for our creative service, creating that website where you can find a lot of this material.
By the way, we're going to be out at the Farmer's Market this Saturday. I'd invite the whole city out to some special Earth Day activities that we're doing as a commission to engage with the public.
Appreciate your work on that. Would you take a photo? I'm surprised Councilmember Carlisle doesn't want like a bee day.
I do want a bee day.
That was, it's part of Earth. Hey, we are going to do some business. Next on the agenda, on the agenda is public, oh, no. Yeah, I'm sorry. I got thrown off. It's not a public here and we're going to do presentations. Before we do presentations, we're going to have public comment. Are there any public comments?
I have not received any request for public comments.
Musset?
My name is Roy Musset. I live at 703 Hamill, Northeast Place. Where's your fancy little screen that so everybody can see this? We've got a major problem. I've asked and asked and asked. It's 1984. Had a city council member set right word that this gentleman was sitting, told me he was in charge of all that. Well, there's a video. This is something that's been going on for three months. Started out as it broke, it caved in. Took them over a month to buck up cones. As of somewhere between 9:00 and 12 o'clock today, they finally came out and put a fence around it. I mowed the yard across the street from this corner. It's Hamill and Quarter. There's three drains. They've been clogged, they've been backed up, they've been messed up since 1984, since I've lived there. And we've requested and requested and requested the city to do something about it. As you can see in the video, the middle of the street's buckled. Right there where the cone is, right down below, well, it's already gone down, but there's natural water, been flowing for three months, daily, three months. It's right there. There's the water going down in there. It's buckled all that up. Where, where's our tax dollars money at? The biggest, my concern and all the neighbors' is concerned, one is a bus stop for little kids, elementary kids. And number two, according to the gentleman, I mowed his yard across the street from it, the kids have been inside there playing. Notice the lid is busted, concrete, the cinder blocks are all busted. Why hasn't the city done anything? We're not in the richy part of the neighborhood? 1969 is when this neighborhood was built. We've had three major main water breaks. Oh, we're just going to patch them. 1969? I think we paid enough taxes to have a whole new line put in there. How many more times does that have to break before you actually fix the problem? How many kids get hurt? And I guarantee you, I will be the first one to find out if some little kid gets hurt there. I'm going to get the lawyer and we're going to sue the hell out of this city council. Get it fixed. Now, am I asking? I'm demanding it fixed.
You've brought up some good points. You've done better before. Your presentations, that's for sure. But Mr. Denning, let us know where that's at and we'll follow up on that. Okay, I thought we were doing a public hearing, but we're not. We're doing presentations tonight. The first one is a presentation on solid waste services. We have Michael Park, the director of Public Works.
Yes. Good evening, Michael Park, Director of Public Works. Appreciate your time this evening to continue our conversation about the Lee Summit City Council Priority Goal. evening to continue our conversation about the Lee's Summit City Council Priority Goal, Solid Waste. If you recall, just a few weeks ago, we had a broader discussion about all four goals. You have beautification, which is later, right after this presentation, stormwater, which actually we just had a conversation kind of kick off back at Public Works Committee last night, solid waste, and housing. And so, a few weeks ago, we had talked to the city council about where to take this next, and city council asked staff to present an engagement plan, and that you would consider an engagement plan prior to directing staff to issue the statutory two-year notice to haulers for our intent of contract hauling residential trash services. And so, that's what we're here tonight, is to explore this engagement plan that staff has put together, seek your direction, if so desire to issue that notice, then we will execute the plan, develop and issue an RFP, and after that process would be public education and startup. We asked who do we engage, how, and when do we engage, and that's in the engagement plan that we're presenting, so we would like to engage our peer communities that are currently contracting for residential trash service, get a better understanding of best management practices, are we addressing all the right issues, and addressing those issues in the preferred best practice way, engage our HOAs, industry representatives, so contact and engage our haulers, the public, create a solid waste task force, then work with the Public Works Committee and city council to bring this to conclusion. So we would reach out to other peer communities, conduct research, survey, meet with them, starting from where our last RFP had been developed, say, are we missing something? What's changed, what needs to be updated? We would propose to meet with HOAs, what we're speaking to are really those HOA board members, representatives of both large and small HOAs across the city. Then have meetings with industry representatives, receive their feedback and understanding as to what the RFP should include, what concerns they might have, and how we would address those. Have public engagement sessions, where we would have a town hall style meeting for citizen input within each district. Then developing a task force from those engaged stakeholders, I could imagine, you know, going to the town hall meeting, having a card out, an interest, if you want to participate on a task force, let us know, same thing with our engagement on the industry stakeholders, the HOAs, and form a smaller task force that we could use as a review panel, if you will, in having that conversation with Public Works Committee. Work out the details of an RFP with the Public Works Committee, and have the committee make a recommendation to full city council for consideration by the end of this current calendar year. Here's a timeline of what that looks like in a nice illustration. We're here tonight in April, seeking whether or not to issue that two-year notice. When that notice is issued, that begins our clock, we couldn't implement anything prior to that 24-month period, but we would have 36 months to do it, or issue another notice. And so we would begin work immediately, if so directed by council, to issue that notice and setting up all this engagement, with intent to have the Public Works Committee render a recommendation for RFP in October. That would assume at least a couple meetings with the Public Works Committee and the Solid Waste Task Force. The city council could then entertain direction to issue that RFP by the end of the year, whether it be November or December, but we wouldn't allow for any type of time gap, we would want to continue to work on this, so that you have a consideration of an RFP award shortly after the New Year. That would all then take place prior to any election, trying to minimize any, you know, political influences and making this an election issue. It would also give us more than a year's time to work on public education and implementation, and get everything set up before we would hit the earliest program start date of May in 2027. So that would be our approach, but I'm willing to take any advisement on how we might want to make changes to that, if you'd like to hear some revision or amendment before consideration of directing staff and a motion of vote to issue this two-year notice.
Okay, so, oh, you're gonna recap.
So, that's it, you've seen the plan, I'll go back to the last slide while you contemplate that. The RFP process is generally about 30 to 45 days, once we get that recommended plan to advertise. So, at this point, we're kind of seeking your commitment through a vote on whether or not we proceed.
Okay, yeah, go back to the timeline. So, the highlighted April is where we are today. You would, if we did issue a two-year notice, you would have a flurry of activity, it looks like, over the next five, six months.
Correct.
With regard to the engagement that you outlined, and the ways that you would get that engagement, and then you're thinking council reports back to us on that engagement in July and September, is that what those dotted lines mean?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, is periodic council reports, those might be just written reports, but keeping you updated with regard to those, how those engagements are going, and the feedback and the interactions with Public Works Committee. Also anticipate, you know, the Chair of Public Works Committee during committee reports would probably continue to provide updates to the full city council.
And then, can you go back to who you're gonna engage with again, the engagement plan? So, start off with best practices, other cities, what they're doing, who's doing it well, HOAs of course, because we have so many, and they, a lot of them do their own trash, industry representative meetings, which would be people in the actual hauling industry itself. Town hall meetings, okay? Task force for the RFP, and work sessions and such coming back to council, okay? Alright, with that, I'm gonna open it up for questions and discussion. Councilmember Shields.
So, the stakeholder engagement, would that mostly be, it sounds like led by city staff, kind of reaching out to these different groups and facilitating all that?
For the most part, yes, I think we would want to work with each council district when it comes to making arrangements for those town hall meetings, that we would propose at least one citizen engagement opportunity within each district, to review what this proposal is, how is the RFP developing, and address questions and concerns.
But like as far as actually getting in the room with an HOA board or haulers, that would kind of be something that staff would be doing, and then reporting back on the feedback to Public Works Committee, or to full council, or both?
So, those, we would be reporting back in our conversations and work sessions with Public Works Committee, but it would also be taking from those work groups, developing this task force, and there we would be collaboratively working and together, having those work sessions then with city council.
As far as the kind of stakeholders that you're engaging with, would anyone from kind of the business community, not just haulers, but you know, like, I imagine that St. Luke's has different trash hauling needs than say, you know, I do, like, will you have kind of some of those voices in the room too about what their needs are, or is this just residential?
The scope of this is only residential. We're not proposing any contracted service for commercial.
Okay, okay, no, that's helpful. I overall like this, I think it says something about how long I've been on council, that doing this all in the course of basically a year sounds really fast, but it does, by the standards of being thorough like we need to be and engaging like we need to be, I think this is an aggressive, but hopefully realistic timeline, it seems like.
It is, and we're also leveraging a lot of the work that had been done previously that had a very large engagement process to it. I mean, we did arrive at a recommended and city council-supported RFP previously, granted that was, you know, 10 to 15 years ago. So we're not starting over, but we're making sure that we've addressed all the right issues and needed to update appropriately, so that does help us, and we addressed this in our last work session with council on this topic, that does help us accelerate this a bit.
And I apologize, I think that was the night that I wasn't here, so, thank you for filling me back in. No, I like this, and I would definitely support moving forward and starting the two-year clock going, thank you.
Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks Mayor, thank you Michael for the information again. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to keep kicking this can down the road, I think as a council goal, I think we need to proceed with this plan and kickstart this two-year notice. It's something that's been discussed in previous councils, this council went over in our retreat and stated as a goal. I think our citizens, pretty much in every district, have asked us to look into this, so I think it makes total sense for us to proceed, so I'd be supportive, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you Mayor. I would just concur. Obviously, I'm behind this, I don't know how soon you can get this, that to us to start, if we had the votes to do it, but I think it's something we really need to get going.
If we were to receive that direction, I've attached an example of the last letter that we issued, that letter's currently in our legal department for review, we would take action to get those mailed out as soon as we could. If there's a motion of support, yes.
So we, it is, it is, I think, a fairly aggressive timeline, but we did start talking about this in the fall with the retreat, and then we identified it as a large, what do we call it, a boulder? Big rock, big rock. Talk about another big rock after this, but this one, this one's a little bit easier to quantify, and to put in timeline, and you've been here before. Will be a lot of engagement though, over the next six months, so, quite interesting. There's not really any negative to putting out the notice, given the fact that that just starts the timeline, and we can engage, and we can have further discussions here at council over the next six months and more.
That's correct, the notice is not going to obligate you to see it through, if you get into the public engagement and the work sessions with Public Works Committee, of course, your direction can change.
I think so, I think motion would be appropriate, and we can discuss if, yep.
Mayor?
Please.
I move to issue the two-year notice to, statutorily required to begin the solid waste considerations.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to issue the notice for solid waste, contract calling, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion. Make sure whenever we post this, Mr. Denning, and Communications Department, that we post that this is, you know, worded so that everybody knows, there's no decision made tonight, we are simply starting a process to have a whole lot of discussions over the next year, so, alright, very good, two years, yeah. Alright, seeing no further discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. So it does pass unanimously, Mr. Park, we are aware, you've told us many times, we gotta be ready for, you know, deep discussions, and, but all that can be facilitated by the city, and we'll make sure that every voice is heard.
Thank you for your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, well done everybody, well done Mr. Park, that was very, I liked your spreadsheet, or your presentation. Next is the presentation and discussion for the city's beautification efforts, this was also identified as a large rock, but I think it really came out shotgun style with a whole lot of little rocks around it, because there's a whole lot of, that goes into beautification, so, I bet you have found a way to make this so easy for us. Why are you laughing?
I cannot take the credit.
I, 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 what?
I can't take the credit for making this.
Oh yeah, he is an engineer, yeah. Oh my gosh, I see another engineer in the audience, might have to bring him up to help you.
Maybe. Well, good news is, I'm not gonna talk very long.
Alright, Mr. Elam, please, lead the way.
Alright, good evening Mayor and Council, Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager, I'm just gonna kick the presentation off, so you don't have to listen to me for very long.
Oh, just so you know, I tried, I took this home and kept it in my house, in case I wanted to pull it out on my wife, and that didn't, that didn't work out.
That didn't work out?
No. So it was not a good idea, you and you and those that came up with this idea, so.
Alright, well, we'll go ahead and get started here, so, what I want to do with the introduction again is just kind of remind everybody again on the big rocks, or the council goals, the priority goals that we've talked about, it is very helpful that we've had some very significant action on the solid waste front. That big rock, that council goal, was, is actually a very narrow-focused goal, so that's allowed us to move forward with some very discreet actionable steps on that goal. Some of the other projects, the other goals that we're discussing, stormwater, that's a more broad goal, but it has still got some definition to it now, and we had a great conversation last night at Public Works Committee, and I would recommend everybody to take a look at that presentation, to see where things are at with that. And we're here tonight to talk about beautification, so we've actually talked about solid waste tonight and beautification, I'll say these are on the opposite ends of the spectrum, on level of detail, or level of specificity, or level of target to hit, so what we wanted to do this evening was really focus in on what we heard, make sure that we're identifying all of the different areas, so we can get to a point to where we can develop that timeline with these action steps that everybody agrees upon, that's prioritized in the context of all of these other goals as well, because there's a lot of resources and a lot of different ways that this can go, so we're continuing to build the funnel, if you will. And then, May 20th, we will be coming back to discuss the housing aspects as well, so all of the, another very big, I'll say, other end of the spectrum goal from the solid waste, as in there's not one clear defined path, and so we're looking to develop that path, so we can have some actionable items with that. So similar to our previous presentations, we're hoping to have this be a conversation, make sure that we're hitting the things that are intended to be hit, we'll be taking notes and kind of come back at the end and recap kind of what we heard. But with that, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Ms. Nassif to kick us off further.
Good evening, Amy Nassif, Interim Director of Development, so really happy to be here tonight to talk about our beautification, and so again, we were with you all at the council retreat and heard the great dialogue that took place with what the requests were and what the goals were, so talking about beautification, that's everything, public and private property, what that relationships and partnerships can look like, and how we can just improve beautification all the way around throughout the city. This is a really great topic, because you may not realize just how many aspects of both our comprehensive plan and our Ignite strategic plan that this topic area actually hits. You know, everything from our infrastructure and the level of services we provide, to our quality of life, housing, housing choice, and land use and community design, is really all encompassed and hits with this topic when you really start unlayering it. So as we were pulling these layers apart, we kind of realized there's a lot of different directions and areas where we can go with what we've heard from you all in regards to beautification, and so the best way we could think to approach this right now with you all is to break it down by private property, and what beautification looks like and means in that sense, and public property. And then within that, both of these areas, we're gonna talk about design, partnerships, and maintenance, because those seem to be the common threads for both, but they have very different outlooks to them each. So the first we're gonna start with is private property, and so when you're thinking about private property, that's our development, and the zonings, and the PDPs, and everything that walks in the door, that could be residential or commercial of any type. So for design standards, the first kind of area of beautification we heard was the beautification of the buildings themselves, so that's gonna be our architecture and building design standards that are already underway with our consultant, and we're gonna be back next week to provide you all with an update and have that really important joint session with the Planning Commission. The other two areas, we have not started yet, well, we've done some background work, I should say, and behind the scenes work, but that would be two areas, which is plantings and preservation, so all about trees, tree preservation, landscaping, and things related to that, or the other area also is the site layout, so those are the items we've been talking about with like, building orientation, where parking lots are located, the site layout itself, and how all of that comes together, and so that's kind of the second area. And so we started this conversation with Community and Economic Development Committee back last August, and staff brought forward several ideas and areas that we were discovering were opportunities in our code to really strengthen and enhance, and also obtain feedback from the CEDC on things they were wanting to see. And so that dealt with, first like I said, the site layout, and the request to research best practices and proposals for things like trash, the trash enclosures and those that were. for things like trash, the trash enclosures and those orientations, parking areas in that orientation. And then, going into the site concerns with trees and tree preservation, we were talking about our lack of open space requirements right now. Currently, our only open space requirements are in planned residential, which is very minimal, at 10 percent, or for multifamily, which we did add in at the end of last year, which is a 30 percent open space requirement. But then, also, we were talking about landscaping and how could we enhance our landscape buffers. And we had a lot of questions and projects that came up where city council and planning commission both were really interested in finding what best practices were and ways and things that we could enhance that, and also looking at things that staff presented, such as, would you like us to look into active open space, which is many cities have this requirement, where not just you have open green space required, but then a percentage of that is what they call active, where it needs to have something where there's outdoor play areas, or dog park areas, or areas where community or residents could congregate and come together. And then, lastly, our tree preservation. Currently, our code has language pertaining to requiring a tree preservation plan with development projects, but we don't have any clear definitive requirements for what the minimum preservation should actually be. So, those were the areas that we started that discussion with. So, this effort will require a look at those best practices, like I talked about, but also researching other municipalities and what their experiences are and what their requirements are, review of our own regulations and our unified development ordinance and things from our comprehensive plan, looking at our comprehensive plan for the corridors and priority areas, and what should our beautification requirements be for development projects that come in, or redevelopment projects as well, discussion and lots of collaboration with our partners and stakeholders, such as the HBA, and our engineers and other development stakeholders that we work with quite a bit, and then develop a set of recommendations. So, moving from that, and in order to do that, we would have a lot of work with our partners, like I talked about in that collaboration. So, in addition to the folks we already mentioned, that would also entail working with our Cultural Commission, Wellness Commission, Downtown Lee Summit Group. There was also really great opportunity here, working with some of our CDBG partners, such as Truman Heritage Habitat, on residential side of beautification. And again, then the property owners and just the development community at large. When we move into the third area of beautification on private property, we're looking at maintenance. So, not just to worry about, you know, what do we look at and require on development, but then how do we maintain that over its lifespan? How do we ensure that those things are being followed that we put into place? So, this is just a few areas and a few ideas of things that we would look at and also report back with when this project does start. And those include our proactive code enforcement, opportunities that we have, our neighborhood programs and beautification. That's been something that's been talked about as well, which probably fold into our housing larger bucket, larger big rock, if you will. Also, review of our tree installation maintenance requirements, requirements during construction, and then any community engagement and outreach as well. And that kind of sums it up for right now. And as Ryan mentioned, we were looking at, have we hit everything in terms of the private property, the topic areas that you had that interest in, or was there anything that we missed in that regard on private property?
Okay. That's for council. She's asking us. Are there any other items you want to add to what Ms. Nassif has put together for us here, for the private side? Councilmember Lovell.
So, really happy to see this. One item, and I don't know if it would fall in maybe these, but water retention opportunities that we can...
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, Councilmember Shields, I'm sorry. She wants to add in.
Thank you, Mayor. There's nothing I want to add to this list. I guess I just want, as this research is being done, this engagement's being done, I want to understand the trade-offs that we're looking at in terms of, with each recommendation, what's the increased cost? Is that going to prevent development from coming to our city? If you need more open space, does that mean less density? Does that mean less rooftops? Does that mean that it's harder to have, you know, the density to drive the commercial side from the residential side? I just, I know that there's, it can sound really nice to do a lot of these things, but I just want to understand, like, what's the pros and cons of each? Because it's really easy to say, well, it looks really nice to add a bunch of extra green space, but does that mean you need a smaller building, or does it mean that we'll give people a reduction on their parking requirement if they'll add more green space? Because where, I just want to know how that all kind of balances out, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that's kind of how we're approaching the architecture and building design standards that we'll be having next week, too.
Okay. So, I get nervous seeing things that it looks like may drive up costs and drive down density, so.
Our goal is to keep us, we have an awesome reputation of how, and collaboration with our partners.
Of being a really good place to work.
And we are a great place for people. They want to come here and agree, to work with us, which a lot of cities don't have. And so, our goal is to, you know, implement the goals of our upper plans and our desires for community growth, but also keep that partnerships and keep that collaboration that we're a place of choice.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of to add to what you have here, I would just like to see, as far as your... If we can really put something into those requirements to be, it doesn't just have to be trees, because, you know, bushes and flowers, but native plantings, if we could really see... Last longer, not die as quickly when they plant them and have to be replaced. Better for us to use natives as opposed to...
Manicured.
Right? And then, also, with the open space requirements that you were just talking about, like, what is that definition? What does open space mean? Is it green space? Is it...
Oh, I didn't know. Open space, the way we're doing it, you can do either green space requirements or open space. Green space is literally just that, areas of green and lawn, vegetation. Open space is going to be areas of the green and lawn areas, also with sidewalks and other areas, like, don't have streets or buildings on it. So, it could be, you could also be including common ground if they have a little basketball court or something on it. It could include sidewalks or a walking trail or a walking path that's not technically green. But we definitely would come back with those definitions, too, for conversation when we return.
Yeah, great. Because I was just thinking, when you just said that, my original thought was, is open space mean, you know, it's just... Some kind of something on the ground, but at least water can still get through it, like, those are, that's where my mind went with that.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Sorry, just, I was looking through the discussion and collaboration with partners and stakeholders. Would also implore us to talk to some of the commercial development groups out there. I see, like, Home Builders Association, or that we're also engaging some of them.
You caught on to my really bad attempt. I tried to find an icon for them.
Drake Development, Ian would be willing to volunteer for that committee.
So, the building, so the first one, the first with all the buildings is actually my attempt to represent the commercial development.
I figured, but I just, I know you didn't call anybody out.
I tried.
But I think it's important that we also are bringing our development partners in there, that, and back to Councilmember Shields' point, I mean, I don't think the idea behind this is to do something so burdensome it doesn't work. And then, and then even, and this is maybe getting too far into the weeds, but especially where, you know, there are incentives tied, and then, like, if we're doing some of these things, it might be a higher level of incentive that we have to consider to do some of these things, too. So, I think all of that kind of together gets us to a really good outcome on this. So, anyway, that's it. I promise.
That's all right. Thank you.
And Ian said yes, so I raised a hand.
And the first step, too, also, I should say, would really be bringing back, here's what other cities do. Here's what our code has. What are your thoughts, you know, really, before just jumping right in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nassif. Michael Park, Director of Public Works, and so, we'll focus on the public side of this discussion with design standards, partnerships, and maintenance. I think I'll pause between each one of those subjects, just to have this discussion on topics, so you're not trying to retain all of them, because these are longer lists. The intent here is, as Ms. Nassif did, try to make sure that our lists are comprehensive, that we haven't added something that you have no interest in, or we haven't omitted something that you would like to make sure that we provide some attention to. As I go through this, we are doing things in these areas, and I'll try to highlight some of those activities, but also understand we don't have the bandwidth to be addressing all of these concurrently. I just spoke to solid waste. We're working on that goal. We were working on stormwater goal. We also have all of the other business activities and services that we're delivering in the department at the moment, but we're more than happy to reprioritize, if that's the direction, understanding that it means something else will be moved. On design standards, I think these are the areas applicable to right-of-way that we've identified, so we can look at increasing our corridor widths, our right-of-ways. What that might do is help push some of our utilities a little out of sight, out of clutter, cleaning up those corridors, beautifying them in those ways, addressing our utility corridors and locations to reduce that visual clutter. These things can be addressed not only in our comprehensive planning, where we show what the right-of-way with expectations are, but in our design and construction manual standards, improve landscaping, streetscaping elements. What does our infrastructure aesthetic standards require? You know, are we requiring form liners on walls to give them a certain aesthetic look? Are we requiring an upgraded fence material? Are we doing things that really have an aesthetic appeal to our community? Are we just kind of holding the basic level of service? Those are the kind of conversations that we can have. We've seen this in other areas, like downtown, we've got black-coated streetlights. We have other nicer retaining walls and fencing on some projects as opposed to other projects. I'd like to think we're doing more so of that in all of our capital improvements than we had in the past. Updating our complete streets policy, Louisville Streets policy, I know the Wellness Commission has taken that action on as one of their goals to help improve, and making sure that our corridors and our right-of-ways are places where we're accommodating all kinds of modes and people of different interests. More sidewalks, wider sidewalks, I think that's a standard that we could look at and has a relationship with beautification. There's also other city projects that I think, when you look at design standards, gateway monuments, we have a couple already in this community, and we're actively working on a third gateway monument. Right now, we have one up at Bolin Road and I-470, and another at View High and 470, and so, we're trying to hit the major corridors coming into our community. I think those are beautification elements that we can deliver through projects. So, with regard to design standards, I think this is the list we've identified, and be happy to answer any questions or entertain any other comment you have if we've missed something.
Questions or comments? Question? Councilmember Rader?
Mayor, I don't know if this is the place to bring this up, but a few weeks ago, we had an email that went out about, there was a suggestion about the working with MoDOT on the trash, and that the city would participate in something like this. And I think Councilmember Shields suggested that, you know, that the city pay for this. And I just wanted to kind of address that in saying that I think that if that's one of the things that we're going to do, I think that maybe it should be more of a business partnership instead of the city paying for that. So...
You just used the key term. So, it's in our partnership category. So, we have design standards, partnerships, and maintenance, and that, I think, is my next list.
Okay. Well, then, add that on. Thank you.
Go on, Mr. Park.
Partnerships, and this will pick up where Councilmember Rader was just having conversation. MoDOT programs for litter management, you know, how far do we want to explore? We're currently actively researching, providing information, so that council can make some decisions on what level of service does the community want to engage in partnership with MoDOT, or do we even want to engage in that kind of partnership to help address some of our litter along our highway corridors? We already have an adopt-a-street program that's more on our maintenance side in that bucket, but there's sponsor highway, and then there's just volunteer litter pickup. How much can our community do to make more community awareness that these opportunities are out there, or do we actually want to financially engage in, as a community, as a city, and participate ourselves as a sponsor in MoDOT's litter management program? We have other city and community engagement and participation available through MoDOT programs, cost sharing and design improvements. So, when you see more recent projects like Chipman Road, MoDOT came in and they did a major rehabilitation project at the Chipman Road interchange at US 50. The city said, we want to participate to make sure that there's some aesthetic enhancements, that the fencing material is nicer, that the walls and the columns have a kind of stone look to them. We could go further. We can add in more landscaping and those kind of elements, understanding that those are not participating items, so that means the city would have to engage in those costs. We've done that, those non-participating items on the 291 interchange projects. We did it on the Blackwell interchange project. So, we can continue to explore those as each state project comes before us for consideration, rather than just taking that baseline, here's what the state's standards are, state specifications, we want something better for our community, understanding it comes at a cost. Exploring other maintenance partnerships with MoDOT, that's something that we can continue to look at, whether or not there's other programs that we can address, not just the litter side, but, you know, if there's mowing or weeding. Maybe there's something there that we can help work with MoDOT or work with our state legislature to increase funds for MoDOT, to increase the level of service to meet our community's expectations. Pursuing additional community gateway monuments, that was kind of on the design side, but could we do those in partnerships with MoDOT? Are there other wildflower and tree planting programs that we could try with MoDOT? We did years ago. We tried to do a wildflower program down 291. It didn't succeed, and it ended up getting taken out, but doesn't mean we fail and never try again. If the city wants to try again, we certainly can. There's supporting the MoDOT state budgets, as I mentioned, for enhanced right-of-way maintenance, seeking more partnerships with our law enforcement and state legislature and federal partners to see where we can't get more funding into enhancing our corridors and right-of-ways than theirs throughout our community, and then that community awareness campaigns. I think that might be what you were speaking to a little bit, Councilmember Rader, and how do we engage, as partners, our business communities, the Chamber of Commerce and our residents, in trying to take action and some accountability to what our community looks like and tackling this beautification? So, I'll stop there and see if we've missed anything.
Okay. Did he miss anything? That's the question. Councilmember Carlisle.
I wouldn't say he missed anything, but I do have a comment.
All right.
So, as far as you said, you know, do we just... My opinion, we should always go above and beyond what Lee Summitt expects, and not just what... That's just my two cents on that item. Everything else that you said, except for the plantings that failed, which hurt my heart, but I think we should try that again. Other than that, that's really all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like this. I think the more we can partner with other public entities or private entities to try to leverage our dollars, make them go further, and get, like Councilmember Carlisle said, more of what, you know, our citizens expect our city to look like, I think that's great. You know, I'm not 100% set on what the city should or shouldn't spend, especially on things like the trash pickup partnerships with MoDOT. I just want to make sure that we're having that discussion. So, I think this is great. I think CEDC is maybe going to be taking that up as something to discuss, and if there's a way to try to partner with businesses on that, too, so that we can kind of jointly sponsor it, whatever we can do to make those dollars go as far as we can, but also give people the level of service. So, I think this is a good, a good place to start, and hopefully, we can bring some of that to committee and figure out the best plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Kind of had a head start on this one, because we've been talking about this for a few years.
Been talking a lot about, especially litter.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Keep going, sir.
On the maintenance side, so this would be our maintenance of our right-of-way and our corridors, is that we continue to expand and improve our right-of-way services. So, we have seen an expansion in personnel and equipment to help try to maintain a level of service that meets your expectations with regard to mowing and weeding and trash pickup on city streets, not on state highways, as well as asset condition. I think that visually has an impact to what the look and feel, the aesthetic of our community is. You see crumbling curbs, we want to take care of that. You see potholes, we want to take care of that. So, continuing to make... and parks and in water utilities to make sure that our public infrastructure, our public properties are kept in the best condition they can be kept in. I mentioned we have an adopt-a-street program that was part of our clean team update a few weeks ago. The clean team itself and the related events and activities that we manage and we push through the community and opportunities like Stream Team and Recycle Fest are all things that I think can help not only create awareness that beautification is an issue in our community and litter is an issue in our community, but helps to also engage our community into addressing those issues. Public access and resources to report maintenance needs and connections. So one example we have on that is, I encourage people to use LS Connect, especially like during winter storms, it's a great way for our community to report problems. You report your potholes, you report damages when things are broken, and then we can get to it more responsibly, and the quicker we can get to it, faster we can address it, the better it looks for the entire city of Lee Summit. Obviously, we've got a lot of capital improvements, and you'll note in our capital improvement plan, granted, it's almost $800 million is what's coming before you, I think there's a report in your packet tonight on what the draft plan is, and it's out for public comment, but you're seeing a lot of reinvestment, not necessarily just widening of roads. Now, widening of roads that are in poor condition is, it's improving our community's aesthetic, it's helping, but when you look at like Third Street or Douglas North, Douglas South, Ward Road, we're not adding lanes, we're beautifying it. Look at what happened when we did Third Street out west or Orchard Street, when we make those capital improvements, what happens to the adjacent properties? They reinvest in their properties. That helps our whole community look nicer. What happened when we did Jefferson Street? You see an Oldham Village development project come along, and now they're going to revitalize that whole area. So those all start with capital improvements, and you continue to invest in capital improvements, citizens invest in capital improvements through sales tax approvals, through bond approvals. I think those all have a tremendous impact on the beauty of our community, the aesthetic and quality of our community. And then we share objectives with other goals, like solid waste priority goal that we just had a conversation with preceding this presentation. So with that, that's our list of maintenance topics.
Anything to add for Mr. Park? Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is an excellent presentation, and you guys have really done a lot of work to break it down, and of course, I think public awareness is absolutely critical. When you, when you think about what you just said, Mr. Park, about the fact that when people start seeing other people cleaning up and taking care of things with homes, it's just like, so the neighbors down the street by the house, and they start fixing it up, and then the next neighbor's like, well, I got to get my house fixed up, you know, it's kind of that same concept with just keeping our city clean, you know, continuing to pick it up and be responsible for not littering. But I also wanted to kind of ask the question, because there's so many points here, so when you come back to us, will there be costs put onto each one of these so we kind of, so we can begin to prioritize on the things that we think are most important, or how is that going to break out?
So on certain categories like maintenance, these are all things we're already doing, and you'll see those costs when you consider the capital improvement plan, or when you consider the city manager's budget, and there's requests for new positions or new equipment. Understand that those positions, those equipment and those projects are not only touching on this goal of beautification, but they're hitting on strategic plan priorities, they're hitting on delivery of our services and maintaining those levels of service. I don't see anything on this particular list right here that we're not doing, we could maybe do more on. And same thing on the design side, we're doing a lot of those things, but we could probably put more focus, more priority, more resources on some of those design efforts. You know, if that's where we want to go, we'll start working up through Public Works Committee, or perhaps on the private side, CEDC, on what those design standards look like, what is the impact of those changes? Because there could be fiscal impacts, they could, you know, increase the cost of development, could decrease the cost of development, everything has a compromise and a balance to it. And so I think as you would consider any one of those items or partnerships, if it's a partnership with a MoDOT project, we'll present you with the agreement, and there's the cost. If you say no, we can dial that scope back. If you say we want more, we can increase it. So you'll always have an opportunity to review what that cost impact is of moving that goal forward in that particular topic. Same thing on these design standards, you know, you'll have an opportunity to see what is the balance that we're trying to reach, what is the compromise, and trying to put more efforts and resources into any one of these topics to help move beautification ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure where this fits exactly into those different categories, but is there any ability to do some increased, I'm trying to think of how to word it, but basically, I think of one spot, there's a roundabout at like Blue Parkway, 50 and Jefferson, next to like Summit Waves, and the street signs there are always getting knocked down because people just drive over the median and the roundabout, and so it seems like putting like some kind of a concrete barrier or something in front of those signs that might protect them and make it so you didn't have to replace them or maintain those often. That might be MoDOT right-of-way, but is there anything, some places where we see this infrastructure gets damaged a lot? Is there something that we need to change in the design to try to protect that asset and not have to fix it as often? I just wonder if that goes into this consideration at all?
It has, and I reflect over my near 20 years here, we have identified some of those areas. If you remember, there was an island like out at Second Street and Jefferson, it was always getting run over, sign was always getting knocked down, the curb kept crumbling. I mean, the solution was just remove the island, and sometimes we see that when we see repetitive work orders and damages, we look for a different solution. Now, the roundabout you're referring to there at Jefferson and Blue Parkway, that is MoDOT's. And sometimes we're not able to change things because there are regulatory requirements for certain signs and conditions, but we do assess that and say, you know, especially in any capital project, we look at how can we minimize the potential for damage or risk.
I appreciate that. The sign doesn't do anybody any good when it's knocked over on its side, unfortunately, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So that is our summary of public and private under the three categories of this under the whole umbrella of beautification, and at this point, I think Mr. Elam, Ms. Nassif, were available for any further questions you have. I tried to break it down into these eight kind of subcategories, both public and private, under beautification, understanding, you know, we're working on parts and pieces, but not exactly sure where we go from here, so Mr. Elam, go ahead.
Yeah, just a few kind of closing thoughts on here, just to maybe facilitate some additional conversation, but, you know, as you can see on the screen, this one topic has, well, eight different components that we've identified here, and each one of those eight components have several different components and steps associated with it, and that's just one of the four big goals. So we just bring this up again because prioritization is key as we lay out timeframes and staff resources, and what that means is prioritization from the council is really going to help move these different things forward. Different things will have different timelines associated with them, and they will have different impacts, but everything that we're talking about tonight with beautification is long-term impacts. They're not necessarily an item that is going to be able to be visible overnight, but it is the big decisions that will be impacting the community for decades to come as we iteratively increase those standards and iteratively increase those different programs. So the question I have for you is, the framework approach that we've presented here, does that seem to capture what we were talking about with, what the intent was with beautification? And I'm going to move over here, I didn't know if Michael was going to stay up here or not. So seeing no comments on there, I'll take silence as, yeah, it's a lot, but the framework seems to make some sense. So with that, there's some details that were discussed, but I'll say the biggest thing that I took from the conversation is that we want to make sure that these decisions are balanced, that we're cognizant of the fact that there's a cost consideration to all of this, and that we're cognizant of that there is a trade-off to all of this. So what we can do on our end, again, is we will look and put some timelines to these items, as well as combine that timeline with all four goals and all four timelines, so we can have another big conversation about, okay, we can, if we do this, we're going to have to pause on this, or we can do this, or we can do these six things, and here's the timeframe for that, and these will have to pause, so we can get to a point where we're tangible and we've got defined timeframes on what we're looking for. Does that sound good?
Yes, it does. Sorry, Mr. Elam, I mean, you're summarizing, but I'm not getting any, you know, any discussion points past what you've put before us, so.
All right, I'm going to take a silence.
That means you must have been concise with the, yep.
All right, great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, that'll take us to the next agenda item, which would be 7A. This is a resolution. Will a city clerk please read Resolution Number 25-07?
Resolution Number 25-07, a resolution authorizing the mayor to appoint successor directors to the new Longview Community Improvement District.
Thank you. I have a motion to adopt this resolution by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Park come back up after she reads this resol-, oh, hey, that's fine. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 25-08?
Resolution Number 25-08, a resolution to adopt Phase Two of the Airport Master Plan Update.
I have a motion to adopt this resolution by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Mr. Anderson, yes, would you just summarize what we're voting on here?
Sure, I'm going to give you a very short presentation. A high level. In 2021, as you recall, we adopted the Airport Master Plan Update. Phase Two seems a little strange for a master plan update, what's up with that? Well, the reality is, the master plan update was really to lay the framework for all of the planning elements, you know, what we want the airport to be. Phase Two of the Airport Master Plan Update, the key deliverable to the FAA, which is a required deliverable, is the Airport Layout Plan. And what the Airport Layout Plan is, is really a graphical representation of our Airport Master Plan. It's what the FAA is going to use and look at, and when they're looking at, you know, our grant applications, our airspace studies for a new hangar, they're going to look at our ALP and say, are we in alignment with our master plan with our ALP? So in order to finish out the ALP, there was multiple other planning documents that are all incorporated into the ALP. That's the property map, in order to show where the air traffic control tower will be in the future, we had to do that site study to know what facilities we need for the runway 36 approach, we had to do that feasibility study to show the obstacles, we had to do our obstruction plan, and really the only thing that wasn't part of the ALP or support the ALP was our Wildlife Hazard Assessment Plan. And you guys recall probably the last couple of years, our engagement with the MBNR to eradicate, you know, birds of prey and the coyotes and geese. So the Airport Layout Plan, again, it's a graphical representation of our master plan, it shows the facilities as they exist today, it also shows the facilities as we would like them to look in the future. So facilities being the buildings, the hangars, the infrastructure, but also the protected airspace, the obstructions, all those things that go into making an airport and keeping an airport safe. So some of the things that are shown, again, it's that, the property, what is the property we own today? Is there property we need to own in the future? You know, and a lot of those things, there's a lot of co-mingling of these studies, you know, the obstruction plan shows a lot of obstructions on the south side of the airport, that's that brown property you see, that's future navigation easements that will be needed, especially if we lower the approach minimums on runway 36. So all this stuff, and it relates. Again, in order to show the air traffic control tower location, we had to do that study, we did select site number two, which is on the northeast part of the airport, and you'll notice on the ALP, on the lower right, you'll see the little orange circle, that would be the location of the air traffic control tower. So, you know, the value of this is when we get a hangar development, and they come in and we do an airspace study, you know, we're going to look at, where is that hangar going? Is it in alignment with the ALP? Is it blocking any site distance for the future air traffic control tower? And we're looking at things holistically. Runway 36 approach, again, we needed to know, what do we need to include in our ALP? Is it a ground-based navigation instrument landing system, or is it just a lighting system? You know, and the recommendation through the study is just a lighting system, much cheaper but effective in lowering those approach minimums. I mentioned the obstacle obstruction plan, you know, those are the trees, we have trees and they grow up, and unfortunately, as they get taller, they start to interfere with our airspace, and we've identified, you can see here, south of I-470, south, you know, in alignment with runway 1836, we have a lot of trees that are encroaching into our airspace or will be if we don't do something in the future at some point in time. And again, the wildlife assessment, I don't really want to get into that too much. I didn't neglect that I do have some bonus material, but for right now, I'm going to stop here and see if there's any questions regarding the Phase Two of the Airport Master Plan Update.
Okay, thanks, sir. Questions for Mr. Anderson?
Question I have is, we've got Hangar Two-
Yes, yes.
When's that going to get done, you think?
End of June, or sometime in July, I think, we should be moving in, it's looking great, we're getting the roof on it. It's a photo opportunity, there's a porta potty on the roof, so that's kind of exciting.
Oh, really? We'll put a terminal right beside that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Got federal dollars identified for that one.
Yep, and we should be looking to go out to bid probably within the next 30 days on the terminal, yeah.
Sometime when we get a chance, Mr. Denny, we need to show the renderings on that. I saw the renderings, and I was like, wow factor.
Well, I'll tell you what, when we go forward with that bid, we'll let you know, we'll bring in some pictures to let you guys know what we're, you're right, it's a wow factor out there, both the terminal and Hangar Two.
All right, well, thank you for that. Appreciate the update.
Sure, thank you.
Go ahead and vote on this now, then.
Okay.
Any discussion before we call for the vote? All right, seeing none, please cast your vote, and thanks for coming in tonight, Mr. Anderson.
We have some bonus material when you're done.
Oh, you're going to give us the bonus material?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, nine zero, thank you. Mr. Anderson, what do you got for us?
All right, just some real quick bonus material, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we stood in front of you guys and asked about support for renaming the airport, and we did that. At that point in time, we didn't really know how long it was going to take, we said the FAA is anywhere from six months to two years. On November 12th, we signed that resolution, and just two and a half months later, we got the letter of no objection from the FAA, which is really there, you know, they've done their study, they said we're okay with the name change, they've notified the airport data team who started to get that information out, and so as we look at approach plates and we look at websites that pilots use, we're starting to see that Kansas City Lee Summit Regional name starting to show up. So by default, it's a bit of a soft opening, you know, we don't really control when those charts are updated, that's all the FAA, but all the major charts now show Kansas City Lee Summit Regional Airport. So I think it's official, we can start calling at that, we're hearing that on the radio call-ins to the airport, especially from our transient pilots, so it's super exciting, you know, and happened really in record speed, I think.
Well, you guys did a lot of due diligence on it, so, yeah.
And, you know, now for the, you know, part of that also was not just renaming the airport, but renaming our FBO services. You know, you mentioned, when is this all going to open up? June, July? We want to be ready for, you know, to really kick it off. So for the marketing, we did spend a lot of time with staff, with aviation, customers, with our fuel service who has a marketing team with creative services, and going through an iterative process and brainstorming and arm rushing and a little bit of AI, you know, we came up with this logo for Summit Arrow, which if you recall, is the city-run FBO services. And then for the Lee Summit Regional, Kansas City Lee Summit Regional Airport, we came up with this as a logo. came up with this as a logo. I ca- I can't really say how we came up with that, um, who came up with that, I think it was just a lot of discussion and, and random things thrown on the board, we, we took a lot of different approaches and ended up here. Different people see different things, when I look at it, I kinda see runways. Joel Arrington, he sees vertical stabilizers, um, you know, our assistant airport manager, Thad Dearman, he sees a wing. But the one thing I like about this, and the one thing we, we talked about when we looked at a logo, is, you know, what's, why do we have an airport in the city of Lee Summit? We have an airport because it's an economic engine for this city, it's an economic engine for the community. You know, it, it's a place for tourists to come in. You know, it's, it's a, it's an attraction for economic growth when businesses wanna come to the city of Lee Summit and we have an airport. Um, and, and certainly, it, it contributes to the economic vitality of not only Lee Summit, but the surrounding area. So we wanted to have a connection to those things. So if you look at the colors, if some of you are kinda brand savvy, you may, you may see the connection. Um, that gold on the top is the branding color for the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce. You know, the light blue on the left, that's our tourism bureau, and the darker blue is the, the Economic Development Committee, or Council. So we wanted to get, incorporate, you know, a connection to that, you know, those are really the three pillars of our, our economic engine that the airport supports. And I think our branding people did a great job because those three colors really go well together, so. Just wanted to share that, and thank you again for the support getting to this point.
Couple council members that would like to comment? Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. Well, I was just wondering, when people are land, are calling into the airport, are they call, are they saying Lee Summit Regional like we kinda thought they might, kinda dropping the Kansas City, or are they saying the whole thing?
A little bit of both, I mean, I've heard it Kansas City Lee Summit Regional, I, I've heard a lot, probably more Lee Summit Regional, honestly, as they're coming in, it's just some, Kansas City Lee Summit Regional's mouthful.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to compliment you guys, I know you've worked so hard on all of this, and it's really beautiful. And, um, you know, the airport is one of the jewels of our city, and we, we can all be very, very proud of what we have now and what's coming in the future. So I just wanted to let you know that, um, I just think what you've done is, is great and appreciate you.
Well, thank you, and we couldn't do it without your support, and we really appreciate it, seriously.
Member Lovell?
Really like that Summit Arrow logo, I assume there will be some, uh, swag that we can purchase, maybe some hats, some things?
Absolutely, yeah. You know, if, if everything's good, we're gonna, I'll send an email out to everybody and everyone can email me your shirt sizes, we'll get you some, we'll get you some swag.
Thanks, you guys did a great job, I love the incorporation of the three different, um, colors and, um, that Summit Arrow logo is really great, too, so, this is awesome, this is exciting stuff for our city, great work, thank you.
Um, can you keep that, uh, Summit Arrow up?
Sure.
If I had a question on that one?
You bet.
I like to drive staff with, crazy with these kinda questions, like that, like, that depiction of that is not, not actually physically possible. I'm just saying, it's going through the moon or the sun there, it's.
No, that's, that's a shockwave from the, from the jet breaking.
That's the shockwave?
Yeah, from the jet breaking the speed of sound, as it flies over Canada, because they can't do that here in the US, but.
Impressive, see, I didn't realize that. Well done, Mr. Anderson. Okay, so that is a shockwave, so if I tell people.
See, everybody has a different interpretation of that.
I saw a shockwave. I did, too, that's what I was thinking, area, right?
All right. Thank you, sir.
You bet, thank you.
Well done. Okay, uh, we're gonna go to... Oh my goodness, oh my goodness, hold on to your seats. Here we go, the fun begins for the evening, we have proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. We will be reading each of these twice, but we have special readers on this council, so it'll be fine, you'll make it through, I promise, everybody. Uh, we will start with Councilmember Funk, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero, an ordinance repealing ordinance number nine-nine-eight-one related to the schedule of fees and charges for the city of Lee Summit and establishing a new schedule of fees and charges to take effect July one, twenty-twenty-five for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Funk, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for adoption, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero, an ordinance repealing ordinance number nine-nine-eight-one related to the schedule of fees and charges for the city of Lee Summit and establishing a new schedule of fees and charges to take effect July one, twenty-twenty-five for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-zero by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-one?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to, uh, advance to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-one, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number twenty-two-five dash oh-three-six for the financial auditing service for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to Forvis Mazars LOP and the autho- and authorizing the city manager to execute the same by and behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-one by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. One more, please. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it moves to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Yes, Mayor, I move to, for adoption, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-one, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number twenty-two-five dash oh-three-six for financial auditing service for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to Forvis Mazars LOP and authorizing the city manager to execute the same and on behalf of the city of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-one by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's unanimously adopted, thank you, Councilmember Prior, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-two?
Just handed that one over to me, if that's okay, Mayor?
Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-two, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract of obligation by between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to satisfy the requirements for a financial assurance instrument with respect to the city's permit to operate a solid waste disposal area.
Thank you, we have, have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-two by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's, goes to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-two, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract of obligation by between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to satisfy the requirements for a financial assurance instrument with respect to the city's permit to operate a solid waste disposal area.
You have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-two by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Prior, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-three?
I move to advance to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-three, an ordinance approving amendment number eight to the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, is adopted by ordinances nine-nine-three-six, nine-nine-three-seven, nine-nine-three-eight, nine-nine-three-nine, and nine-nine-four-zero by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-three by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Funk, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does move to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-three, an ordinance approving amendment number eight to the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, is adopted by ordinances nine-nine-three-six, nine-nine-three-seven, nine-nine-three-eight, nine-nine-three-nine, and nine-nine-four-zero by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-three by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Funk, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-four?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-four, an ordinance approving the agreements for the purchase of tree trimming and removal services from CTC Disaster Response Inc. and Chiny Mission Tree Service Inc. DBA Arbor Masters and authorizing city manager to execute agreements for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does move to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-four, an ordinance approving the agreements for the purchase of tree trimming and removal services from CTC Disaster Response Inc. and Chiny Mission Tree Service Inc. DBA Arbor Masters and authorizing city manager to execute agreements for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-four by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Please cast your vote. All vote, all votes are in, please record the vote, it's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-five?
I move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-five, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven-twenty-two for the water main replacement FY project to Leith and Sons Incorporated in the amount of four million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-five by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk, discussion? Yes, Councilmember Lovell?
Um, I'll be recusing myself due to conflict on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does move to second reading, eight-zero with one recusal. Uh, Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-five, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven-twenty-two for the water main replacement FY twenty-four project to Leith and Sons Incorporated in the amount of four million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-five by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight-zero and a one recusal, thank you, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-six?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-six, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number eight-eight-seven dash SS for the surface seal FY twenty-six program, Advance Brothers LLC in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eight dollars and twenty-one cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five d- dash zero-seven-six by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does go to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-six, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number eight-eight-seven SS for the surface seal FY twenty-six program, Advance Brothers LLC in the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eight dollars and twenty-one cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-six by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's adopted unanimously, thank you, Mayor Potem Lopez, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number eight-eight-seven dash OV for the mill and overlay fiscal year twenty-six program to Tandem Paving Company, Inc. in the amount of four million, fifty-nine, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and five and seventy-eight cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven by Mayor Potem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Prior, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, goes to second reading unanimously, Mayor Potem Lopez, would you please?
Yes, I now move for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number eight-eight-seven dash OV for the mill and overlay fiscal year twenty-six program to Tandem Paving Company, Inc. in the amount of four million, fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and five and seventy-eight cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven by Mayor Potem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Funk, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-eight?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-eight, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinance for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri by revising Appendix B, schedules of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the city of Lee Summit.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-eight by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it goes to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Funk, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for adoption, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-eight, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinance for the city of Lee Summit, Missouri by revising Appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the city of Lee Summit.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-eight by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Rader, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-nine?
Yes, Mayor, I move to advance, bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-nine, an ordinance approving modification number, two, second reading, an, an ordinance approving modification number one to an agreement for professional engineering services of the, for the prior road phase-two improvements from Hook Road to M-150 Highway RFQ twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five-eight between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Affinis Corporation for an increase of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars with an amendment not to exceed amount of one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-nine by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does move to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Yes, Mayor, I built, I move to, um, for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash oh-seven-nine, an ordinance approving modification number one to an agreement for professional engineering services for the prior road phase-two improvements from Hook Road to one-fifty highway RFQ twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five-eight between the city of Lee Summit, Missouri and Affinis Corporation for an increase of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars with the amendment not to exceed the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-seven-nine by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, that bill is adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Prior, would you please read bill number twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Shields?
No worries. I move for second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number twenty-two-five oh-four-nine to purchase landscaping services and materials, uh, on an as-needed basis for a one-year with up to four one-year renewals to Rose Hill Gardens contract number twenty-two-five oh-four-nine-one and Dupree Landscaping LLC contract number twenty-two-five oh-four-nine-two and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it does move to second reading unanimously, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for adoption of bill number twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero, an ordinance approving the award of RFP number twenty-two-five oh-four-nine to purchase landscaping services and materials on an as-needed basis for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to Rose Hill Gardens contract number twenty-two-five oh-four-nine-one and Dupree Landscaping LLC contract number twenty-two-nine, twenty-two-five oh-four-nine-two and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-five dash zero-eight-zero by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Prior, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimously adopted. Okay, uh, that takes us through proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, uh, we're gonna go into proposed ordinances first reading. Uh, the first one, uh, is actually, um, coming back on, it's a reconsideration. Um, I'm gonna let Councilmember Lovell read it, and then, um, I'll, I'll ask you to say I'm going to let Councilmember Lovell read it, and then I'll ask you to say a couple of words here. But why don't you start us off, sir, by reading Bill number 25-061?
I move to advance the second reading, Bill number 25-061, an ordinance approving preliminary development plan for land located at 3394 Northwest Village Park Drive for express stop convenience store, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-061 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Okay, before we kind of get into discussion, Councilmember Lovell brought this back for reconsideration. Didn't feel like we had, you had really all the information that you wanted, and the council went ahead and voted on it, where I think it really, maybe where you would like to have seen it land is with more, with more information and input, and it looks like we've got people here. Is that fairly accurate?
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, I think just based on past experiences in our neighborhood and just wanting to know more about the developer, the operation, didn't feel like I had enough information to go forward with it. You know, since then, did have a chance to meet with the developer, see the property, the operations, felt very comfortable with what they were doing, and then asked to bring it back last week, and they are here. If anybody had any more questions or concerns or anything like that, I know we're not in a public hearing, but...
No, I think what we'll do is we'll bring Mr. Slisht forward first. If you would just come forward, Mr. Slisht. You represented this last time, right? Maybe you could, I know that you presented, and we kind of had the design, you know, we talked about the design. You made it through planning commission, but the owner was not here last week, and I think the owner's here tonight?
Correct.
Could you maybe make that introduction and have him come forward?
Correct. Yeah, so we'll have Eddie step up, and yeah, he can talk through any questions you might have for the project itself.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Thanks for having me.
You bet. What's your name?
Eddie Musalet.
Musalet?
Musalet.
Musalet. Mr. Musalet, just a few things. We're kind of wanting, I think what Councilmember Lovell kind of expressed is he just would like to know a little bit more about operations, a little bit, a little bit about you. We're not trying to get into your background and things like that, but we just want to know your expertise and experience. That's kind of what we're looking for.
Okay. Thanks for having me. I've started convenience stores since, since the 90s, and I ran over like 30 gas stations, convenience stores, and this concept that we're doing now, we started our first one on 179th and Flum, and it's, it's, you know, we got like the drive-through coffee with the boba tea, with the, you know, the full line like Frappuccino and all that, and we focused more on food as far as, you know, like other gas stations are doing more liquor, vape, slash, but we're more, you know, gas station, food, coffee, you know, stuff like that. We, we're doing another one on 56 and State towards, sorry, I'm not, towards the, what is that, the Legends, and we're focused on areas like this to where, you know, we can bring our food, coffee, fresh donuts, you know, stuff like that, so...
Areas like this, you're talking, why Lee Summit?
It's a, it's a high-quality area where, you know, we can get that clientele that's, you know, that can come to these nice gas stations.
And can I just ask, why the west side of Lee Summit, the View High area?
I believe that's a good location, you know, going off the highway and coming. There's no, really no competition over there. If you go on I-70, is that I, going east?
I-470.
Yeah, Douglas is the first, you know, really nice gas station, which is Quittrup, no, Woods Chapel. If you go west, all the way to like Row or Warrenell, there's nothing really, you know, around there. The gas station down the street is, that's not really competition as we're focused, like I said, food, coffee, fresh donuts, you know, we even got produce, little bit of produce in our stores, so...
Yeah, the, geographically, there's not a lot of C-stores between, I hadn't really thought about, between Chipman or Douglas?
Uh-uh.
All the way to, you got Raytown Road, so that's interesting. Okay, we got a couple councilmembers for que, that have questions, maybe?
Okay.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor. And so if I hear you correctly, what I hear you saying is that you want to really provide not just fuel, but more of the convenience items and not the booze and the vapes and the stuff like that, right?
Yes.
So you're more geared towards maybe not fast food, but convenient food items, plus coffees and drinks and other things like that?
Yes.
That aren't alcohol-based.
Yes, we, we, we got some pictures, if you guys want to see them.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah. The one on 179th and Flum, it's got a Subway in there, and then we do a lot of like grab-and-go burritos and cheeseburger, but it's really good.
The hot food that's there as well?
The grab-and-go.
Not just like on the wheelie thing or whatever?
Yeah, it's... There's a drive-through, which is Caribou Coffee, if you go back one. Keep going. We got the Subway in this one. That's next. See, we got like, you know, full coffee line, all kinds of machines there. That's just for coffee, so we focus a lot, which is Caribou is the brand we carry, you know, like the high-end coffee. Then we make our own sandwiches on the other side, so, you know, we make those there. We got a kitchen in the back. This is where we make, you know, fresh sandwiches. And then like, see, we carry high-end, like the touchscreens. I don't know, there's what, 16, 16, and then 10, probably 50 flavors there. Oh, there wasn't. It doesn't show the, we do like a lot of grab-and-go, but like burritos, cheeseburgers, fillies, you just grab it and go, so it's...
So people can go on their lunch break?
Yes.
Instead of having to go wait in the fast food line?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. So you're saying that you will not be carrying any type of liquor items or vaping supplies at all?
That's not our cup of tea. It's like more like a, you know, like a Quittrup we carry?
Yeah.
Something like that. It's not, it wouldn't be like a, you know, liquor beer first. This one's got to get a liquor store next door.
Okay.
But it won't be like, you know, real excessive, no.
No, it won't be.
More like Quittrup, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Councilmember Lovell, you saw the store?
Yeah, and so I just think, you know, my personal opinion of it is more in line with kind of what I've come to expect in convenience stores, just the quality, the cleanliness, and the operations in general is not anything like what we have out there right now, and I think, and after speaking with some neighbors and just knowing the traffic and the ability to have some, actually some groceries in there that are not expired or, you know, be, you would, you would be welcoming to go in there and do those things. I just felt very comfortable with the operations and the layout of the store in general. It's very professional, it's newer, it falls in line with kind of the things we've come to expect with the Quittrips and the Casey's of the world with an independent operator.
Did see it had some trees around the outside. Tree day. Arbor day. Both. All right, well, Mr. Musalet, it does mean a lot when you show up to these meetings, to council and such, so I, we appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys having me.
And you even brought your engineer and your architect too, so that, that means a lot. Yes, Councilmember Hodges?
I was wondering, can I just see a picture again of what you guys showed last time that shows the placement of it, what, what's around it again, what buffering you guys have?
Last time you had it?
Yeah, slipped a different thumb drill. The IT guy today?
Yeah.
So is that what you'd like to see? There's also a landscape plan, I think I have in here too, that shows it.
Okay, so there's going to be a wall of landscape separating?
Yeah, so what we did on the orientation of the building is, so we have View High kind of on that westerly side. We directed the building more to the southerly side with the anticipation that some other type of development would happen on the northerly side of the site, and what that does is it provides us an opportunity to create the landscaping along, to continue that kind of View High corridor that has the rather wide, as Mr. Park was talking about, kind of creating those wide corridors for some enhancement. This has that, that opportunity in there, so we got the landscaping on that side of it. So in that corridor, you know, is the continuation of where the apartments are, and then you'll see later on is the continuation of the development of that whole corridor as we head towards 470, so, yeah.
And then on the other side, where, is that like a, a big house?
Yeah, so to the south, and this brings back the idea that back, you know, in 2016, we had kind of an overall development plan, so now we kind of flipped ourselves a little bit. View High's sitting down. The Meridian Apartments were built, but kind of the rest of the development hasn't gone and started anywhere. That house is part of the original development plan. However, as time has gone on and that development hasn't started, that house has actually kind of been reoccupied and is kind of awaiting the development of the, the overall site or overall location out there.
So when you guys put out the notices, they, they would have gotten a notice?
Correct. Yeah, so we noticed all of them. I think it touched the apartments and, you know, it's 300 feet, I think.
Okay.
So we did, we did get a notice to them and didn't hear anything.
Okay, that's why I was curious.
No one attended our neighborhood meetings, planning commission meetings, or any, any of the council meetings.
But they, I know we had an issue with saying the distance, so not everybody necessarily was notified.
I think the Councilmember Lovell had commented is that nobody technically in Winterset had made it, but that's, you know, nearly 1,000 feet from our, our property line, and so, yeah, we noticed everybody within the 300-foot corridor of our site as required, had our neighborhood meeting for that. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that.
Yep.
Question or questions? Again, Mr. Musalet, thank you for coming tonight and bringing your team with you, so...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any more discussion on this? I think it's kind of important to note, oh, the district is, you know, the district is represented by Councilmember Lovell and Councilmember Carlisle. Oh, and me. You know, I live, I actually, it's not just that I'm the mayor, I live in that area, and yes, I get rides from Councilmember Lovell sometimes, so, so it's, I, I'm seeing some support from you guys on this one, because I think council members are going to want to know what you guys are going to do.
Have you brought?
Councilmember Lovell, you brought it back.
Yeah, and again, you know, after, you know, seeing the operations, and then, and then, you know, it's anecdotal, but reaching out to other neighbors, my constituents in that area, kind of talking through it, I think the general consensus was, heck yes, like, and again, it's anecdotal, but I know we've, we've felt underserved in that area, and I think this is something most people were excited as I, as I shared a little bit more about it, so I feel very comfortable with it.
Hodges? Yeah, please.
So I know that you had, I don't think we knew last time that you had a lot of other gas stations. We just heard of the one off Flum. So I remember last time I was Googling that address to see what it looked like, but it was so new that nothing came up. So I'm curious, because a lot of issues I feel like that we see with gas stations is that they're not well-maintained. After years, they kind of look like, eh, maybe a little trashy sometimes, and that's what we don't want to have. So I'm curious, since you, do you have references to some of your older ones, so we could just see maintenance-wise, the ownership of that? Because it's easy to refer to the new one, because of course it's going to look great, but...
Pictures of other locations, if you'd like to see those too, or you could just talk through the other locations, whatever you'd like.
If you have pictures, that'd be great, just to see ones that have been maybe for a few years.
One we're, like, the new concept, so, this one, that's 95th and Lenexa, 95th and That's Truman and Prospect. We, and then we brought Wayback Burger out of Connecticut there, so that's... I got a crew, we like, we keep them, I got my own landscaping crew, because I got like nine supermarkets that are El Mercado Fresco, and I got like World Fresh Market. I don't know if you guys ever, on 103rd and Metcalf. So I got like my own team that's always painting and cleaning and landscaping and all that, so...
Okay.
They're all on my payroll, it's not like...
Okay, no, that's great. I appreciate you having some...
You're welcome.
...supporting the revenue.
You're welcome.
Great question. Thanks for asking. Councilmember Funk?
Before, I don't want to mispronounce his name, before you tick off, do you have a, a concept, like, you showed the one on Flum had Subway, and then you had this Wayback Burger. Is there a, a food concept going in this one?
I, wasn't there, I got the coffee program in there, but I didn't think that they wanted to, they didn't want to, yeah.
So, so there, there's room for it on that side of it. I think it's early in the development side of it. So our original plan has some room for it, in the space of it, as it sets out there, because we have Kessler Drive and Village Park Drive are kind of terminated at this point until that connection begins to get down there and some other road improvements come on. The traffic concerns limited this site to the coffee and the C-stores currently, so that was what limited the number of dispensers and limited the amount of buildable space at this time, but there's space on site to continue to develop food or, you know, other type operations in there as the road network and everything else kind of continues to develop.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Musalet.
Welcome.
Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, good.
Thank you. Well, I was just wondering if you could just forget about the gas station and do a World Fresh Market. I love that place. It's one of my favorites. Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any more discussion. I think we're just going to call for the vote and see how this lands. This is a motion to move to second reading. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does pass unanimously, Mr. Musalet, so it'll go to second reading next week, but again, we appreciate you coming here, but we also appreciate you investing in Lee Summit, so thank you. Okay, next is Councilmember Shields. Would you please read Bill number 25-081?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25-081, an ordinance approving a funding agreement between 3D Builders KC LLC and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri for the View High Sports Complex.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-081 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't see David here, but you don't need to come down, really. It's just a, I was having a discussion about this earlier, and Mr. Dunning, you can probably answer this question, but this is not, this funding agreement is not the plan for any kind of TIF or Chapter 100. This is just the agreement that gives the city the ability to work with them on that agreement, correct?
That's correct, and it, and the funding agreement places funds here, so that as we work on this, then we can draw down on, on that, as, as we do work on the incentive request itself to prepare that. That's, this is pretty standard that we do a funding agreement because with incentives like, such as this, you know, it comes at a cost, and we look for the developer to, to share that cost and not use general fund revenues to support that work.
Thank you, and then...
Mr. Dunning, would you clarify? You said draw down, but you, you mean get reimbursed?
Reimbursement is...
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Um, as this goes forward, will we see this again before we just have to approve it? And by it, I mean whatever agreement this has?
Well, all that has occurred so far is a conceptual presentation, right? And, and there was consensus to continue to pursue this. So the work that's necessary to continue to put final details to this, that's what this funding agreement helps cover the cost for, our, our time doing that. So what would be coming next would be that fully-prepared proposal for consideration.
Presentation.
Correct. There's still more decisions to be made on the incentives, for sure.
So before we have to actually vote on the incentive package, we will see a presentation from the developer and from the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Mr. Ehlam. Good job, Mr. Elam.
(laughing).
Any further discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass 9-0. Thank you. And then we have a couple of second readings. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-052?
Do we have someone reading 2508 to you first?
What? Oh, I skipped one. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 25-082? I'm sorry.
I advance to second reading, Bill number 25-082, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Tom, Thomas Anthony Kraft and Mary Kathleen Kraft, as trustee owners of the property operated as lawn and leisure to facilitate the 291 North Interchange Project.
Bill number, we have a motion to move Bill number 25-082 to second reading by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Funk. Discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes unanimously, thank you. Now we will go to that second reading, and Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number 25-052, an ordinance approving rezoning from District Ag Agricultural District CP2 Plan Community Commercial and Preliminary Development Plan for View High Sports Complex on approximately 17.18 acres of land located at 3350 Northwest Asher Street, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, I'm sorry, motion to adopt Bill number 25-052 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion?
Sorry, that'll be me on the preliminary development plane.
None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes 8-0 with one recusal. Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez, would you please read Bill number 25-067?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill number 25-067, an ordinance approving the tax increment financing contract and community improvement district cooperative agreement for the Oldham Village redevelopment project.
A motion to adopt Bill number 25-067 by Mayor Potem Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It passes 8-1. Thank you. Many reports? Think that the committees, I would think that the committees are exhausted after all those proposed readings from committee. Councilmember Pryor, start us off, please.
Thank you, Mayor B. So last night, we had a Public Works Committee meeting, which I think is pretty obvious, because I feel like that was most of the agenda. We pretty much discussed everything we passed tonight. We went through on-call contracts for tree trimming and surface seal programs, the overlay program, water main replacement, and then the airport master plan. Yeah, pretty much everything you saw tonight. One important thing, the capital improvement project plan is currently published for public comment, and you can go to the city's Facebook page or the city website and find the link for that. And I believe it ends April 20th. Yeah, CIP if you go to the website. But the Facebook page, I think it was posted yesterday, so it's pretty far up at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. Level?
Thank you. So we met Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs, had a report from our lobbying team this week, and I'm going to draw a blank on this bill, but it was the one that we were all, had to do with the underground... Help me out, Mr. Dunning.
Was it Bill 661 with the utility relocation?
Yes, 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 that did not make it through the House, I believe. Correct. Our understanding is that it may not be totally dead, but for the most part, right now, it doesn't look like. And we were, there was some concern on our end with the capital improvements and the costs to the cities and not really understanding that, so that was good news. I'm just trying to think of anything else that, I thought there was another one, I'm not doing a very good job recalling my notes. I was ready for CDC to talk about that and I forgot about...
Well, thankfully, it was uneventful, because in some years, it's been pretty scary.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, we really enjoy working with our lobbyists group, we think they do a great job, really have raised the bar from, you know, what we've kind of had in the past, maybe, and just think they do a great job for us and always open to our suggestions and ideas and keeping us in tune when things happen down there, so, in general, all good there. Also met on, CDC met April 9th last week, where we reviewed the consolidated plan for the CD, CDBG grants, that will be coming before council, I think, maybe next week, or where we have certain funding, got to see the presentations of all the different social services and opportunities to allocate those funds, which were kind of, there's strict guidelines as to what we can do, and had a nice presentation from all those groups, and you'll see that in a couple weeks, so. And then also had a chance, because we've had a lot of things passed down to CDC, had a chance to meet with Mr. Elam and Ms. Nassif today, kind of going through a few things that we had talked about, which was panhandling, some C-store things, maybe for the future, what we can, can't do. Chickens were on the item today. We've got some follow-up with that, which will come before CDC, where we're going to be discussing that a little bit further, and then maybe come to council. And then also urban infill opportunities for, just maybe different ways for housing opportunities, especially in urban infill areas. And then we also talked last week about PDP requirements and things that we may or may not be doing. Now, there's going to be a bigger discussion on housing, I think that's going to come before council, and some of these items may be in there, and if they have to go back to CDC, they will, but we've got quite a few things to go through for our next meeting, and just taking action on those items that have been passed down to us, so, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'm going to do my best mayor per time impression and thank the other committees for all their hard work, and I really appreciate the informative updates, it's really nice to know what is going on in some committees that I don't sit on, so thank you, guys. And then Finance and Budget Committee, we will have our special session Monday, the 21st, at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thanks. I just wanted to mention about the Legislative Committee, you brought up a great point during the legislative meeting about the lobbyist, a potential lobbyist going to Washington, DC. Do you want to touch on that more? Okay. Just basically, Mayor Baird visited with another city that has a lobbyist that goes, that's in Washington, DC, and it's made a world of difference as far as their funding has gone for that particular city. And even we've noticed a difference just within Jefferson City, having our lobbyists in Jefferson City, what it's done for our city. So we wanted to talk further about just having a lobbyist and maybe investing in a lobbyist to go to, that's within Washington, DC. So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we wanted to get Mr. Head involved and talk to him about it and have him maybe prepare thoughts and such for us, because the rate of return for the amount of money that they put into the lobbyists, which was significant, but it was 20 times what they put into it, over the long term. Might not work out every year, but when it did work out, it worked, it worked big.
90% of time?
Yep, so, yep. So thanks for bringing that up. We'll have to, Mr. Dunning, we'll have to talk and give everybody notice and get it in front of us later. Unless you absolutely want to go through Legislative, we can take it through there first, but I think we could probably bring it to council. Okay. Councilmember Funk?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Park can help me out, I hate to make him walk all the way back down here, but I attended my first Mark Total Transportation Committee meeting today, and it was interesting, the only topic that really got brought up about Lee Summit was they spent $16 million on 200 buses for the World Cup. The KC Committee has procured them, has secured them, and Lee Summit is chosen for a destination pickup, and I think the spot was at the Summit Technology Facility or the Independence Center.
You're close, yeah, so...
I took in a lot today at that meeting.
I'll step in. There was a lot, actually, on the agenda for the Mark Total Transportation Policy Committee. One of the presentations was an update on the KC 2026 transportation report out of activities for the World Cup, you know, KC 2026 is the organization and board running, all of the event planning, and part of that event planning is the transportation network. They said they were a little behind schedule with regard to their deliverables, and the board isn't expected to make decisions on that plan approval, which would include the identification of park-and-ride malls. Essentially, they're just very large, you know, 1,500 to 3,000 parking space area where these 200 buses that have been leased would operate between venues and various, you know, half dozen to eight park-and-ride mall locations throughout the metropolitan area. They have identified a site among 26 other sites in the entire Kansas City metro area that meet those criteria, the site that's been identified, I would like to say is a preferred location, because it meets all of their criteria, that's at the Summit Tech Building Campus. On the north side, you recall, there's a huge span of parking, not in conflict with any business operation, they could easily secure that site, I'm making my pitch right now, if they're listening, to select Lee Summit. I think it would be great if our community could host one of these park-and-ride malls. We should all nod, and I've been in contact with Matt Barrett at the Chamber, encouraging their outreach to provide whatever influence we can to the KC 2026 Board to select a recommendation for Lee Summit to host one of these sites. That was the update, as part of their update, they also acknowledged that the Kansas City region is one of the host cities, is actually one of the most advanced and progressive communities in preparing for World Cup, surprisingly. I get the feeling like we're far behind, because it's such an enormous event, probably the largest sporting event ever to be held in the world, and across North America. And yet, we're the first host city to have secured a lease of buses, 200 buses, to manage the transit operation, which will be managed by KC 2026, not by KC ATA. And then we're one of only two host communities who have, I guess, conceptually met the deadline for developing and submitting a transportation plan, and so that's really good news. I guess if you're looking for something that Kansas City region is a host city is doing well, it's, it sounds like we're doing better than many of the other host cities. But we remain engaged in the conversation as a community, and trying to, as I participate on their transportation work group, continuing to plug Lee Summit as a location for a park-and-ride mall, and then we can start to set up our own connections and events around that, if we're so lucky to be picked.
Great job.
Otherwise, doing very well. There was a lot of content at CDC.
There was a lot.
A lot of content.
Thank you. Okay, well done on the committees. Council comments? Member Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. So our public speaker that we had today, Mr. Nassif, it sounds like he's been here before with requests, is that correct? I'm just curious as to how we handle these types of things when...
Sorry, I didn't understand who you're talking about.
Oh, the gentleman that came in and spoke about the, about the...
Nassif?
Yeah, Nassif, is it Nassif?
Yeah, he's supposed to check in, but... Would have seen him, she would have... Please, we'll go to him if she sees him.
So, yeah, so how do we follow up? Just to staff, just, yeah?
Oh, Mr. Dunning is going to take care of that.
Just Mr., okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that if anyone was listening, they knew that we were, yeah...
The reason I'm not going to go into it back and forth with them, because there are just too many times that they've contacted staff, and staff has already been there, and there's a plan in place, and they just weren't patient enough to let it fall through. Now, has it been since 1984? We don't know, but I'll let Mr. Dunning address that at some point, go on board, you know...
Sure, sure.
You want to make comments, or?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor. I already know, that area has been fenced off with construction fencing, so it's not open like the picture described. So we have awareness of it, and yes, we're putting efforts towards that, so I will follow up with Mr. Nassif.
Thank you.
I got to, you know, it's really, can I say something? I'm sorry. Mr., I mean, Nassif, the way he, I thought he did a really good job, but then he threatened us, and that's just not a good way to end it. Given, you can ask Mr. Dunning and Mr. Park, I send stuff to them all the time, and I'm sure many of you do. All, we email, and it's not, Public Works is not an easy job when you have the entire city under construction like we have right now. And, like, I'm not saying we're perfect, but let me tell you, if something gets dropped and I make a call, like, they're on it. And usually, by the time I get them called, they're already on it. Like, usually, before, they call here, and then they call you or me, and before I can even get them called, they're already making an adjustment. And so I've just had this conversation with you last week, didn't I, Mr. Park, just saying, you know, I appreciate the fact that I've called twice in the last couple of weeks, and both times, you've already, you were already on it before I can even, you know, finish my conversation with them. I mean, they've already dispatched. So, but I do know there's a lot of stuff going on, and there can be dangerous things like what we saw, we need to, we need to get them, we need to make this community safe, so...
So Mayor, the reason, that is exactly the reason why I brought it up, because I wanted to hear your response, and for people that would be listening to hear that we do, we really do, are always working and trying to do the best that we can to fix problems, and we had a big presentation last night on stormwater, and there is a lot going on that we're trying to solve, so. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. No, thank you. I do think when your city's under construction like it is right now, it's, there's always going to be risk that we're mitigating for, but I don't know, we'll just have to stay in touch. Don't assume, just make the phone call, send the email, do what you got to do, use the app, but, whatever you need to bring up to staff, because I feel confident they'll address it, so. Okay, Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I can also attest to the fact that there, Councilmember Shields and I represent downtown, and there are a lot of stormwater issues, but every time I've ever emailed, they get on it pretty quick, when they're able to. We did have an issue where the ground was frozen, and they, it was prolonged, but as soon as they were able to, they were out there and they got right to it, so they do a great job. Also, I had the opportunity to go to a luncheon today, put on by Link to Lee Summit, but it was highlighting Answering the Call. So if anyone hasn't heard of Answering the Call, it's an amazing nonprofit that supports first responders that are injured, in the line of duty, not in the line of duty, just, I know as a first responder spouse, it definitely makes me feel better knowing that there are places like nonprofits like, well, I think it's the only one that's actually like, that is like it is, Answering the Call. So if you haven't heard about it, look it up, and... Yep, yes, they are, they do great things, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Level?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to, the presentation earlier by Ms. Nassif, Mr. Elam, and Mr. Park on kind of the design and beautification, really impressed with that. That has obviously been something that I've been talking about for a long time, but I think what maybe get discounted in that is that these ideas that we have and all the stuff that we kind of put out there, your guys' ability to take that and kind of compress it into different buckets and get it outlined like that in such a clear and concise way, and that you heard all of us, and you've got those items there. I just commend you guys for the work that you do. I know that it's just getting started, and there's a lot more work to do, but that type of presentation, collecting all that information and putting in a format like that, just warms my heart, so to speak, because it just shows a clear path and direction to trying some things out, and some of them may work, some of them may not, but I just really appreciate that, appreciate your guys' work to put that...
really appreciate that and appreciate your guys' work to put that together. Thank you so much.
Well, it's our goal to, um, have people in Carmel, Indiana talking about Lee Summit, Missouri. [laughing] Did they really? Oh, that's terrible. Oh, my goodness. We, we do wanna be a role model, though, and we, uh, we do appreciate you pushing us on beautification because I think you can see it's important to all of us, so thank you. And I think part of that, um, that we don't, that's hard to put on the presentation, is culture, because you, a couple of you kind of alluded to that. How do we, how do we, uh, have this culture of taking care of our community and, and such? And something you wanna think about, um, Mr. Elam, Ms. Nassif, is for a truly, for us to truly have a culture of, of, like, beautification, we really would have to also embrace, like, try to get the schools involved, all the community partners, schools, um, dragging Joe Snook into the meeting and getting his, you know, what do you do in the parks? How do you do it? We wanna, we wanna, you know, just, just having it being a total theme, so. Um, but I think, I think it's great, too. I think what you did with tonight was phenomenal, so thank you. Uh, Mr. Dunning, you got any roundtable or comments?
Yeah, uh, kind of on that, that'll, uh, line of thinking, Mayor, I, as, I was listening to the beautification, uh, presentation, I wrote down pick it up LS, right, as kind of this tagline. Well, when you go to our city's website, it says let's, let's pick it up, is the tagline for, um, these efforts, this green LS effort. And so, um, creating more awareness, engagement, excitement, whatever you wanna call it, um, behind these will, will absolutely make a difference. So on that note, on April nineteenth is when we have our stream, stream team cleanup. Uh, that's from ten AM to noon at Deer Valley Park. Uh, they'll be meeting in the parking lot on the southwest corner of Langford and Todd George to go, uh, clean up that stream. Then on April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is our Sweep the Summit, where we focus on our, uh, local roads. On the website, there's a opportunity where groups, individuals, get teams together, go sign up for a section of road or alley or area within the community, uh, register through, through that portal. We'll provide the trash bags, uh, and, and know that that area's getting cleaned up. You make it happen, we'll come by, pick up the trash and thank you for helping us out and, and, and we'll clean up Lee Summit. Um, so that's another opportunity coming up. And then on May third, we'll have Recycle Fest from nine to noon out at the maintenance facility. So some of those efforts coming forward, Earth Day, Arbor Day, you know, pick it up Lee Summit, let's pick it up, um, all that information's out there on our website. I would like to note, uh, we mentioned bees earlier, so we do actually have a, an opportunity for that, but it's in June, the Pollinator Festival will be coming, so wanted to mention that. And...
What's your bee, sir?
And out of a sense of, um, you know, where things are at with committees, I do wanna make a, a note that it was last council meeting where we provided that estimate on the sponsor highway, that MODOT program. Um, and, uh, out of transparency, Mayor Potem initially assigned that to CDC. I, I pushed, I'll say I pushed back a little bit, because that wasn't clear to me that that item got assigned or got direction from this body to get, get assigned to a committee. So I wanna make it very clear, we haven't plugged anything into motion to pursue anything in that, in that space yet, uh, but we certainly can. And if I were, uh, to think where might that most be appropriate, probably Public Works Committee, because we'll need to work with MODOT on anything in that space, uh, so that would just be a suggestion there. But right now, it hasn't been assigned anywhere, but if there's a desire, then we can, we can certainly make that happen. Um, and then last thing I have is next week, we'll have a joint session here, uh, with the Planning Commission, the Design Standards Consultant will be here, so it'll be a little different setting when we come in, uh, in preparation for that meeting. That's it, Mayor. I turned it down, but I don't know how quick it turned down.
[inaudible]
Yep, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, I wish I could adjourn the meeting, but I can't. We have a closed session.
Well, this one...
Um, could someone read us into closed session? Shields, please.
Pursuant to Section six-ten-twenty-one-one of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication with a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in pursuit of Section six-ten-twenty-one-two of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to leasing, purchase, sale of real estate by a public governmental body, where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore in pursuit, and to Section six-ten-twenty-one-thirteen of the revised statutes, the state of Missouri pertaining to individually identifiable personnel, records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, I move to enter closed session.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to move into closed session by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Level. Discussion. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Level?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Raider?
Aye.
Councilmember Funk?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.